Flip your mic on, Jimmy. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 AM or 7:00 PM. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberal and progressive advance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all across.
One small addition to the agenda. The American Rescue Plan money, we have to accept that. We're going to call that old business number four. With that, anybody have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda?
Okay, attached are the minutes from our last meeting. July 12 city council meeting, then we do have the accounts receivable and the accounts payable for tonight that will be approved tonight, mailed tomorrow. Just a couple of items I wanted to point out in the payables. One is that we did replace two overhead doors in the fire hall. So you'll see that invoice in there which is budgeted for. And then we also did receive or we purchased a rock for the ponds outside of town. You'll see that in there. That's from town board people structure. Other than that, all of the other invoices are basic routine payments.
I move, we accept.
I'll second the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone here to speak through public forum? Public forum? Public forum? Notice of communications.
Okay, you have a couple of items that we received here in the mail. A couple of you have the monthly magazine from the League of Minnesota Cities. And then we also did receive a flyer addressed to each council member in today's mail, so I stacked that on your pile tonight. And then we also do have a handful of letters from residents at the Northwood subdivision that submitted some letters late in the evening on Thursday and asked to put them on the next council agenda, so I put them in the notices and communications for you.
They were asked to be put on the agenda or just notice of communications? Do they want us to? I don't, does anybody here that wrote a letter?
No, no, not a letter.
I didn't see anybody.
Do we want to discuss it now? Andy, do we want to wait and see if they want to come to the meeting and discuss it with us?
I think that might be the best.
Instead of redoing the same conversation two weeks from now?
I agree.
Okay.
Should I reach out to them and invite them?
I'm hoping that we put this on the agenda and address this in some way.
Yes.
I would prefer that we delay it till...
Till they're here.
I may not be at the next meeting. It's a good possibility I might, but I may not be at the next meeting. I'd like to be present when we address it, so could we put it on a...
You want to do it August 23rd?
Yes, well...
That's, I mean...
On the 23rd? Oh, no, I'll be at the next one. I won't be at, it's a possibility I might miss the 23rd. So the next meeting...
So you want to look at...
Two weeks, yeah.
Yep.
I think we should have them here to be part of a discussion if we're going to make any moves on it.
At least an open invitation to them.
Yes.
Okay, I will reach out to them tomorrow. That's all I have for notices.
Okay. Council report. Anybody have any meetings?
Nursing home is, census is level right around 30. They're doing well on employees right now, but the college age and school age kids are going back to school, so if anybody knows anybody looking for a job, Nursing Home is hiring. They asked me to announce that. But things are looking good down there at the... Did they get your... Okay.
Planning and zoning met, and they discussed the changing of the business districts and reassigning some R1s and R2s, but the first reading will be two weeks approximately. I don't have the date.
August 17th.
This is that overlay thing we were talking about?
Yes, yes. Extending the business districts to enforce our policy.
Other than just outside of Main Street?
Other than just Main Street, so. We looked at it, and it's a first reading, it will be the 17th.
Okay.
Could I correct my, it's Whispering Creek, not Nursing Home. On the record that I didn't...
Old habits are hurt.
Yes.
Yep, I don't have anything for the Gulf Advisory Board.
Okay. All right, administrator reports.
All right. In your packet, you have the cash balance report dated last Friday, July 23rd. Also have some good news. A lot of times the administrative report doesn't include, what, $440,000, but I can do that tonight. The state legislature at the very last minute in the transportation bill approved a program that existed a few years back called Small Cities Assistance, kind of on top of the screen there. And what that was is the state would offer money to smaller cities in Minnesota to help pay for maintenance and constructions of roads and alleys and things like that. So we did receive our first half payment last week. It's about $20,000. We'll get the other half at the end of this year. I just talked with Joe Zimke today about this. He and I will talk, we'll chat a little bit, and we'll come up with a list of things for you to consider spending that money on. Fair enough. Local government aid came on July 19th. The first half of our local government aid came in, it was about $421,000, which is half of what we will receive this year. The second half comes in in December. And then also to let you know, last Friday, we found out that next year's local government aid is going to be $848,000 for Janesville, which is a little bit more than this year. And Jim, you just mentioned this, the planning commission will have a public hearing, I put that in this report, August 17th to 7:00 PM to look at the vacancy structure ordinance and then a few other minor items in this only, in this only column. And the last thing I have is the most recent update from the Coalition of Great Minnesota Cities. And as I mentioned, Councilmember Kay, you and I will be at the conference this week, and we will sit next to each other on Thursday for about an hour and a half.
Maybe.
But, yeah. So that's, we'll be doing that this week.
2:10, right?
Yeah, and they're always on time. 2:20 probably. But call me, and I'll...
Yeah, when I get, we should be in town by 12:30, 12 o'clock, and then we're going to have lunch with my sisters, and I should be there.
Very good. That is what I have for administrative reports for tonight.
Most to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mike, you...
Yes.
Remember, when I'm taking minutes, you have to talk really slow.
Old business number one would be 108 West Third Street.
Yes, a while ago, the city council discussed a camper park on 108 West Third Street, and we had mentioned to the property owners that we would talk about it again at the council meeting, so we contacted them. Yep, they are here tonight for the council to discuss the current ordinance that we have, the direction you would like us to take with that.
Come up to the podium.
Jason Marley, anyone have anything to say?
State your name and address for the record.
Jody Rollback, Jen's, 108 West Third Street in Janesville.
Jason, you want to address this?
I certainly can. Well, city state, it was brought to city state's attention that you had an RV parked in the front yard, and so they sent out a letter, and it is technically in violation of the ordinance.
Yep. We get that. We stated we came to a meeting probably a month or so ago with discussion about that, and I guess I just, do we want me to repeat everything we discussed that night, or...
You don't have to for me, but I remember what you said.
I wasn't at that meeting. What was the end result? Was the result that the RV had to be moved?
There was no end result.
The end result was that the council would talk about it.
It's okay, public forum.
No, because that was actually during a public...
Yeah, they spoke through public forum at that point, so.
So we're at the point right now where it's on the city council agenda rather than the public forum section of the meeting.
Yeah, the public forum is not meant for action. It's for identifying problems and then we can address it at a further time, and so this is the appropriate...
And that's where we're at right now.
This is the appropriate step to take, and having you here is what we really need to.
No, I mean, if you do a final rating of the ordinance, it's violating, so.
And I understand that, and there are several throughout the town. There are several people in our neighborhood that are also in violation. There is a big truck that sits in front of the stop sign, which I think is a violation because people run that stop sign. I grew up here, my parents lived in that lot. They, there is a driveway access there. When the city redid the road, you guys, the city put that access back in there for us. I grew up, we always parked our camper in the front yard. I know that city rules and everything change over time. I guess it just, I don't remember what we were discussing that night. I mean, I'm off the yard, I mean, off the road. We would park it in the road. The reason, it's too big to put in our driveway because it would hang over the sidewalk. It is a fifth wheel, so we couldn't do that, but people would have to duck. We told them that the reason we do put it in the yard and get trouble for it, especially in the winter, is because we have four cars that, we have kids that live at home, we have cars that we feel we're trying to stay off the road so that the plows can go by. I mean, it's always, I guess it's not a nuisance. I look down the road and see my neighbor's house that looks like a nuisance, but I'm not. And it seems like nothing gets done about any of it unless somebody's turned in.
Yep.
So I mean, I can drive down, I mean, why are these rules in place if not everybody has to follow them?
Yeah, and that's kind of the issue, you know? We don't enforce the ordinance.
I thought you were enforcing it on me, but you're not going to penalize anybody else.
Nuisances are complaint driven. We don't go out and look for them, we're not singling anybody out.
And I guess I don't understand why it's a nuisance because it's in my yard. It's not really bothersome to anybody. I've had several neighbors tell me that it's not an eyesore, it doesn't bother them.
There is a simple solution here, and that's in two little A. Those vehicles that are parked are stored outside in the front side or rear yard area must be on a paved or gravelled surface. If you put gravel or pavement down...
I've been in the gravel.
I called several months ago and asked if I could do that, that I would do that, and I was told no, that I was still in violation.
Does it that say that if it's parked on the...
Because I, so I would, I would put concrete or gravel there if that would support...
Let's look at B, one above.
B?
The person may not place, store, or allow placement of fishing house recreational vehicles, et cetera, in the front yard of a residential property.
Okay.
So one of the questions here...
Well, this is in the front yard.
It's in the front yard, but it's actually got a driveway access.
It's a cornered lot, so it's kind of difficult to...
There are two front yards.
The front yard is the address side is how it's assumed by law. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, front yard is the address side.
I would propose that, I don't, I think it's, if you gravel it and all that, I think we should, we could make it, because of your situation in the corners, and my thoughts and all the rest of council feels, you have a cornered lot. It's not impeding traffic, it's out of the way. The thought process of gravelling it or cementing underneath it is for weed control underneath, you can't do it while it's parked there. I think we could, I don't know how we do it, but we can make an exception because of the cornered lot, the way it's situated, it's not feasible. Because if you had it hanging out over the sidewalk on the Mott Street, you'd be in violation there too.
So I, if I could just suggest here to the city council, what Mike is saying is that if we make an exception for front yards, then the item on the top of the screen in yellow there, number one...
Would have to be changed.
We would just change the language about, we would have a two-front yard exception.
For cornered lots.
Corner lot exception. But we could do that through the public hearing process.
Yes, it's a process, but I think we can, I think it's something that we, I think we need to have a way of, as long as it's not an eyesore, and we need to make a means of making it how you can get it done and not how you can't, is my thoughts. We're a small town yet.
Well, we try to work with each other. We don't try to penalize people arbitrarily.
Yep.
And if we can find some solution that would be acceptable to you and we can work it within our ordinances, I'm all for that. I don't want to be heavy-handed in any way on you, so.
And if I...
So our procedure would, we'd have to rewrite the ordinance, have a couple readings, so what do we do with the situation until then?
Well, what I would suggest is that if the city council wants us to look at amending our ordinance, we can certainly do that. Mike, I think a couple of meetings ago, you had asked that we have some ordinance revisions by the end of August or early September, so we could place this on that for council discussion. Until then, would you accept the placement there if it is parked on gravel or an impervious surface? Would the council be interested in that?
I think that's a viable alternative.
I agree.
As long as we're going to address it anyway, if they will put some kind of a hard surface under it. Is that acceptable?
We don't have a problem.
The problem is the council does not approve a change, then they got all that gravel clean up in their yard.
Yeah.
I would almost prefer we didn't have them, just leave it as it is. I don't know if we can, until we make that change, so the final wording doesn't matter. I hate to have you put a bunch of gravel in your yard since something happens and we don't change it.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm into having everybody fill their front yard with gravel and campers and everything else anyways, so. Why don't we have a discussion on a possible ordinance change? At this point, we'll make the exception and leave it, move it, mow underneath it.
And, yeah, we have been, so.
Okay, so to allow the exception now and direct the staff to...
Make an exception for the cornered lot and their...
Come up with a cornered lot exception.
Yes.
And we can do that.
Is that an acceptable thing?
Yeah.
And waiving penalties and things is better?
I'll make that a motion, so.
Okay.
I'll make that a motion as a, to have them leave it as be until we make a resolution change or at the, in the August meeting, is it?
Yeah, I mean, the public hearing notices.
Yeah, can we...
It'll have to be.
It'd be a good one.
Yeah, I mean, we just have to notify...
It's a process, it takes time.
So we would waive any penalties and violations until we decide what the ordinance is actually going to read in the end, and then we can address it.
We simply wouldn't enforce it at this time. Not on this particular...
Okay, that's my motion.
That's your motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a copy of our ordinance as it's written? Would you like one?
Actually, you...
She can take mine. I've got it in my email anyways.
Thank you.
Yes.
And thanks for coming tonight. I know Sarah had called and invited you to come tonight. We just said we'd talk about it in the future, so we are.
Okay, old business number two, data practice policy.
Okay, we have had a data practice policy in place for quite a few years now, and basically state statute asks us to look at it, review it annually. The league suggests August of every year. So attached is the proposed changes, and Andrea worked pretty hard on this. All of the items in yellow are basically updated with current state laws, current statutes, items that are included as part of the Data Practice Act in Minnesota. If you remember, I talked a little bit about that last February or March when we had that work session. So basically, attached is the changes to the policy and then a resolution making the amendments.
I read it through, it's quite thorough.
How did we come up with the, sorry, how did we come up with the $11 per hour? Where did that come from?
We have been charging minimum wage, which is $10.08, so last week I'm like, just make it 11, it's easier.
Okay. That's something that is on our fee schedule?
Some cities charge a lot more than that, correct?
They do.
Is it the...
Some cities, it would be the normal hourly rate of whoever you have designated as your data practices responsible for...
I will, don't check that.
Is that on our master fee?
Yeah.
Schedule?
I'll check.
So you adjust that every January, right?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, Jim.
Nope, that's fine. That was, I was going to get to that too, so.
So I think Jim was making a motion.
I was, I was on the verge, but I wanted to know about that dollar figure also, so I will move that we accept this and pass it. You may have put a lot of work into it and...
Andrea did.
Andrea did.
I'll second Jim's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Old business number three is disc golf, and I believe Jim would like Gary to come up with...
Gary, would you like to address the council? You've got a lot of info, and whatever you decide to neglect, I will fill in.
How is the, has everything been approved as far as using city property for...
Yes. Yes, we approve that.
We have not approved the driving range. There is another, another point to this.
Just to point out that when this originally was discussed, we had talked about possibly a nine hole, but it has become an 18.
And it's still within the park perimeter?
It's Lakeview Park, yep.
So you have a map, and Gary has an upgrade dated map, I believe, that we moved the T-box number three. We, Clinton thinks it might be on D and R property, so we're going to move it across the road to the south. Other than that, I don't think there was a lot of change in it. There might be a couple minor.
I ran out of, you had to pass this around. This is, this is the final proposal for the disc golf. You had to pass this around and...
What are the two colors? What are the two colors?
It's a long and a short, team fat. That's what I figured. Yep, and then the squares, the squares are where the, where the T-boxes are, the circles are the baskets, yep. We are asking, what the map that he's distributing right now is the property the city owns over by Nelson Street behind the high school. We're proposing that we'd like to have a driving range, but there wasn't room out at the, out at the park. What we'd like to do is to use that property and set up a series of baskets, two T-boxes and five baskets at varying distances for people to be able to practice on, and it'll be in the city limits, but it's on city property.
And that property right now is, the school, JWP, is in the plans or currently using that right now for some of their athletic complex facility things, so...
On the, be the east side of that creek?
Yes.
Is that where you're talking, Jim?
Yes, sir.
On the east side of that creek or on the west side?
East.
Or the west?
Where's Nelson Street?
That creek.
I think it's on the west side.
Yeah, it's on the west.
It's on the higher ground.
Yeah, the east side has a lot of, a lot of wetlands, and the west side actually has a little better contour to it. These won't take up a lot of space. The T-boxes are going to be four bay, concrete slab at ground level, so it's not a tripping hazard, it's nothing. The only thing that those five baskets, I don't see where that would interfere with with JWP, and it's, this is a city project, so I think we take precedence. So, anyway, Nolan and Gary have been working really hard on...
You're talking in here, right?
Nope, this is where the white dots are.
It's on higher ground on the south side there.
It's right on the south side. You know, there's a bunch of houses along here, and then there's some trees. And Nelson Street is right over here.
Trying to get orientated of where...
It heads toward the backside of the football field.
Yeah, football field is right over here.
Hey, Jim. Jim, will there be something put up to prevent the frisbees or whatever from going into the private residential property along Second Street that backs up to them?
Don't know. You think...
What was the question?
If there would be some sort of barrier put in place between that driving range and the private residential properties that abut it.
I think, I think the trees will keep the disc out of the, off the private property myself, and that just might be, and they'll be throwing toward the northwest toward the football field. There should be, I don't believe there'll be an issue there.
Is this driving range for a, so we can host tournaments or something like that, or is it?
This would be, I'm hoping...
I don't know much about frisbee golf, so.
I'm hoping JWP will do it as part of their FIED program and have a disc golf program within their, their structure if we have a facility.
I've been told that the high school right now has a portable disc golf basket that they've been using for several years, and so this will enhance their program, I feel, and might even lead to, you know, extra part where the kids can use, utilize this and maybe end up being another extracurricular activity for them.
Well, it's a practice range is what it is, and the nice thing is it's varying distances anywhere from 100 to 400 feet, so any age, any level of skill can go out there and...
Where would people park for this? I hate to be playing devil's advocate, but...
Nelson Street is what I would, yep, that's only what, 100 feet away?
And we do have access.
My question, I guess, is there, is there a need for a driving range?
Well, it's like a regular golf course, if you look at it that way for practice, if you would...
Do other disc golf courses have driving ranges? Is that typical?
Usually they're, they're part of the range. We started out, there's a little history there, we started out with a drive, with a driving range at the Lakeview Park, and one of them was up the hillside, and we ended up realizing that that was the sliding hill for kids in the wintertime. So we had to, we had to negate that one because it would have been a liability. So this is when Jim brought up the situation where he was approached by the city, I guess, to use that area off Nelson Street for a community garden, which he in fact found it was too wet for conditions down there to actually utilize it that way. So this is why we ended up with, well, Jim proposed the south side on the higher ground, which is better for this type of purpose, and is not subject to as much flooding there as it would have on the east side of that pond.
And if you want to do more research on that driving range and discuss it at a further time, we aren't going to do construction until September. That's when Nolan has his expertise, people coming in, and going to help construct things. We'll construct the disc golf course at Lakeview Park first, and then we would go to the driving range. And if the driving range doesn't get done until next spring, our goal is to try to get the, the disc golf course up and going at the park this year. My, my question to you is, does it, is it acceptable? We moved that we could make a nine hole out there, and you authorized us to build if we could find the money. However, now it's an 18 hole, is that change our resolution or our, our confirmation of use of the park?
You, you've still come up with a means of funding it outside of...
Absolutely.
Tax revenues, so I...
Absolutely, it's private funded.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem at all.
I would almost, and I don't, would like to see a year go by and see how much use we're getting out of this before we tie up more state property.
Reasonable. What do you think, Gary? I think that's a reasonable approach.
Yeah, we're open to suggestions, I guess, at this point.
My suggestion would be to go ahead and get your course up and going at the lake and maybe kind of use it a year and feel people out, see if there is a dire need for a driving range for it, or if maybe they're able to do some of their practicing on the course. I mean, it is free to use the course, so.
Yeah, there's one advantage, there is no charge for the use of the course. It's completely, it is on a, it is on a, as used purpose where, I mean, you need to wait for your turn to use it.
Right. Courtesy.
Do we want to share who's funding it?
Yes, the Legion has approved the funding for this project.
The Jamesville American Legion Post is funding the course. And we're going to name it, or the proposal is to name it the Veterans Memorial Disc Golf Course. And then there's going to be some memorials placed throughout the course honoring vets.
I've got a little, I've just got another handout here we can pass out. To honor our veterans, we're going to name the tee boxes after battles from the Civil War all the way through to the present.
Yeah. Oh, I got one.
These are battles that people from this Legion served in. Correctly. Gary?
Yes. My research for the last two years, I've been documenting veterans, veteran material.
So do we need a separate motion to authorize the 18 holes, or does that attach onto what we passed before?
I think it attaches on to what we didn't specify was, if I remember right, nine or 18.
I would suggest the council make a motion approving the preliminary layout planned to construct it in September. And that motion also to state that we will determine in 2022 the location of the driving range if needed. And then, you can vote on that, and then I would make a motion to create the fund that is attached to that.
Right, that would be the next-
I'll have some.
Is that your motion, Jim?
I would move that, yes. And the fund would be for construction money or money to operate the course, repairs, blah, blah, blah.
I have to listen to the tape again to know what I said.
Does the city, or do we have approval for the city to, about the funding, or not the funding, but the handling of the funds?
Yes, as long as it's a city fund, they will do the accounting and the tracking.
Is there, are you a tax exempt?
The city of Jamesville is not a tax exempt organization.
That was one of the questions we had about as far as the company billing for the product and so forth. Okay, just a little to back up, if you look at, if you look at the, at the course, we're gonna name, like, there's 18 tees, tee boxes, they're, they'll be named after particular battles that were fought from the Civil War all the way through present. And we're kind of matching up, if you look at the first tee box there, number one, I'd label that one Iwo Jima. Two is Flanders Field, and you go down the list. And what happens, or what has happened here during my research, I found that a lot of our veterans served in a particular battle on this list. And to honor their service to our country, we're going to name the tee boxes, there'll be a number tee, number on the tee box, and also the name of that particular battle. Some of the challenging ones are, if you look at, not necessarily challenging on two, but two is like Flanders Field, it's kind of a wide open area. If you look at number 12, that's the hook. Number 13 is Old Baldy. I picked Old Baldy there because it's a hillside without any trees. So it kind of make it synonymous with the tee itself. 14 is Heartbreak Ridge. If you've ever been out there, that's got about a 60-degree angle to it. And Nolan Crockford is the one that's laying out the course for us, and he's got 25 short tee, short and long tee tee boxes on our course. If you look at, if you look at the, like, in number two there, there's a long tee and a short tee. So there's two different choices for the challenge for the course itself, on most of the tee boxes. So if you look at the, some of them that are more challenging have the, more of the name for them that has a more of a challenging name, if you would. So on the, one of the things that Jim is working on right now, there'll be a bulletin board, if you will, by each, it'd be at the start of the course. It will have the name of the particular battles here, and a view of the course, the first, the course itself, the main course, and then they had also reserved a place for the driving range. So it'd be on each of the different billboards that are out there. Is anybody, anybody here familiar with disc golf?
I'm familiar with that, I play golf there.
Well, me and Jim are not. In fact, this is our first experience as far as-
Well, if this is your first experience doing this, I gotta say you hit a home run. I mean, this is baffling.
It's a superior site for, it's a very competitive site for disc golf. And there's only, Nolan thinks that this is going to be comparable to the site that's over by Waterville in Morristown. And he said that is a destination site coming from all over the state. And if we can do that, that could be a big plus just for Jamesville alone to have a destination thing in the community, so the people will come.
I think this is much better than Waterville.
All things come together nicely. Like the 18, remember George Picard? Love where the plan comes together.
I'll second your motion, Jim.
Thank you.
I just have one more question, minor. Any trash cans on this course?
Our plan is to additional, put additional trash cans and additional porta toilet, at least two of each on the site, and if the traffic requires it, we would do more. And I want to address maintenance in our new budget when we do it this fall.
And I believe the maintenance can be in this new fund that we create.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm still looking at the pricing and all that, additional cans and facilities. I know, I think there's five or six cans out of that park now, so if we need to-
Possibly some of them can just maybe repositioned as well?
Clinton and I have talked about a lot of the issues, and we're trying to deal with them within the parameters that we've set, within that fund. So hopefully, we can get it all within that, and it's no tax dollars, no burden to the community, but a big asset.
Very good. I believe we have a motion and a second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
We also have resolution 17.
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept resolution 17 to start-
Create the fund.
-the fund to do this with the donation.
All in favor of resolution 2021-17?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Jim and Gary and everybody involved.
Yes, thanks for your hard work on that.
Old business number four, that's the head on. American Rescue Plan Funds.
Move my paper around here. I'll leave that on my paper. We found out this morning that the city did receive the first half of our American Rescue Plan Act money, which will total about $240,000. We received half of that today. We will receive the second half next July, next year in 12 months. So tonight's resolution accepts that first half money, and it also creates the fund that we are gonna put all of this money into. And then, in the near future, the city council, after I talk with staff and we brainstorm a little bit, will come up with some suggestions for the council to look at on how to spend the money. Of course, there's a lot of limitations on what you can and cannot spend the money on. Andrea and I attended like a one-hour webinar today, a bunch of ideas from all sorts of different cities, what they're doing. So we, our wheels are already turning. But we'll come to you here in the next few weeks with some ideas on how to spend it.
Can we get some type of a generalized list of the parameters?
Yeah, absolutely.
Basically, you know, dumb it down for us, but some type of a parameter list?
Andy Allman asked a good question, is it similar to the CARES Act that we received last year? The answer is yes and kind of no. Some of the stuff we could spend money last year on, we can't relate this year, so there's a few. And the reporting is much different because the reporting is now to the feds, instead of St. Paul, but that's okay. It's just another level of government.
It's actually better.
All right.
And just to mention, you'll have, you'll have more time to spend it.
We have till 2025?
You've got till 2024 to appropriate it in 2026 to actually spend it, at least on the county level, you're doing, I'm assuming it's gonna be similar to the city.
Yeah, so it's similar.
You can actually have some time to make good plans. And I will just mention that the county is looking at a lot of things as well, and we are anxious to collaborate with other local units of government to make the most of the ARCA fund for our county and for our region. So that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight, is to just make sure you hear that directly from me to you. If you've got an idea and you can work together on it, let's make sure we're talking.
And if anyone doesn't know that, it's Commissioner Alter.
For the record, Commissioner Dealter. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are we calling that, resolution 2021-19?
19, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution 2119 to accept the funds, the first half of the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does it for new business, old business? New business is rental license discussion for 7-Eleven North Main.
Yes, thank you tremendously to Marley and Sarah. They spent a lot of, a lot of time last week putting this report together for you. A TAP is a pretty extensive report on the number of nuisance violations, nuisance complaints, issues that we've had with the rental property on North Main. The city council did look at this issue about a year ago, I believe.
October.
October of last year. Nuisance violations continue. So after reading through that staff report, we would recommend, as city staff, we would recommend that the council suspend the rental license for that area. We also need to inform you, as a city council, you can revoke the license as well. So tonight, we have two resolutions available, you can obviously discuss this as much as you want, but we do have a resolution to suspend the rental license for 90 days. We also have a resolution to revoke the license period.
Got a couple of questions.
Yes.
The $400 fine, we fined them last time, that we said could be, most of it refundable if they took care of business. Did we refund any of that?
It was actually 500.
500 and 400 was-
suspended, they get 400 back, they wound up paying.
Did they do what it took to get the 400 back?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on Exhibit D that it was done.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that in there.
So since then, since late last fall, there's been a number of more nuisance violations.
According to city code and our habitual nuisance policy, our next step is either suspension or revocation of the license.
I was not on the council last fall, however, I was here. I believe we basically told them it was the last warning back last fall. More or less.
Nicole Miller is the property owner.
So I did file the eviction for the ones that we spent having the issues with on Friday.
Just hit your name for the record.
Nicole Miller.
Okay.
We're just hoping not to get our license suspended. With COVID, we weren't able, we weren't able to do evictions. July 4th, 12th was the first day we could even file for non-payment of, or for anything besides non-payment of rent. I got these notices, I know the one was on the 3rd and the one was on the 18th, so the police report. And I did file it on Friday, if that's in consideration.
So you did file an action to evict?
Yes.
What options are we leaving the homeowners with if we revoke or suspend their license, Jason?
That's what I was thinking.
Not incumbent upon you, that's responsibility of the landlord.
So with no evictions, if they would suspend or revoke, how would we go about getting them out?
You're in a tough spot.
Isn't the eviction shelter basically only to cover people that are behind on their rent? It doesn't cover people for being a moron?
You can definitely evict.
Right now, for non-payment of rent.
But, I mean, the issue is, you know, it's gonna take you a while to get into court and actually physically get them out.
So like I said, I did file it, she hasn't set the court date yet, or I haven't received it, but I do have proof of payment and that it is in process of getting them out. We don't want these issues either. I've been talking with Sarah, I'm trying to figure out what to do.
Your options really tonight are, you can issue a hefty fine, something that is punitive, something that they will feel. You can go with a suspension, you can go with a revocation.
So there's two property, or there's two-
It's a duplex, yes.
Yep.
And all of these have been on the lower unit.
All of these complaints have been?
And that's what the eviction was on.
Okay.
Have there been complaints or police calls when there was prior tenants there before this current tenant we're speaking of? Anybody?
Have there been prior tenants, or these are the first ones?
There was one, two in there prior that I know of.
And then it's only requested suspension rather than revocation?
What does that mean as far as suspension? What is?
Suspension means it's gone for 90 days, but at the end of the 90-day period, you get it back.
Yeah, so a 90-day period, that's what I'm thinking, so the 90-day period, do I just get them out? Like, you know what I mean? Like, what is this suspension of?
Yes, you need to get them out.
And you won't be able to rerent or have anybody in there for-
For the 90 days.
For the 90 days. So you will lose some income out of it.
Right.
If they're not paying anyway, it's probably-
If they're not paying anyways, it's a gift.
But my question is still, how do I get them out? Like, you can't, you can't evict them. I don't, I guess I don't know if I can go around a different way.
You gotta give them judicial order.
There's more that I can do.
You can evict for this, isn't the shelter only to cover them for non-rent? You can evict them for this.
You can now since the 12th.
Yes.
Yeah, you can evict.
And that's what I'm in the process of trying to do.
I think having a suspension would more than booster your court case to get them evicted.
I also wanted to say the owners did talk about selling the property as well, so that's kind of what they're talking about doing as of right now. That's why we-
I have a difficulty with this property to begin with. That's a residential area, and when that house was moved in there, it should not have been allowed to be moved in there as a rental. That was not a multifamily rental area, that was a residential area.
It is legally allowed under our conditional uses allowed in the R1 zoning district.
I'm just saying we should have, I was on the council at that time, I would not have allowed that at that time, and so I'm against having a rental there at this point. I'm in favor of revoking the rental license. I'm sorry, but I think the property is probably worth something, and you can sell it to an individual family, but I don't, I don't think that property should have been there beginning with.
It's gonna cost more for the new person to turn it back into a single family than to leave it as a duplex for someone.
Brian, do you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah.
Could we get you to come up, too?
Sure.
That's just my opinion, but I needed to state that.
I'm Brian Ziegler, I live at 713 North Main Street. This has not been just a basement tenant problem, it's been previous tenant problems. The city has been called on this. What they did with, I don't know, previous staff, they have been called on this, it wasn't until- It wasn't until a year ago, I was told I needed to call the police. That's a problem for me, I shouldn't have to call the police to do this. What are they going to do, really? You go down there, tell them to be quiet? This has been for the last four weeks, it's non-stop. I'm done, I'm done. I want to see it revoked because the people before was a problem. We've had problems with the upstairs guy. We've had talks, 2:30 in the morning, out there fist fighting in the front yard. They're parking in the front yard when I drove up here tonight. They driving through the yard this weekend. It's just non-stop, guys. I don't know what you have living next to you, but you wouldn't put up with it either. And I'm done putting up with it. I want to see it revoked. There's no, there's no reason for it. It's all hours of the night, guys. It's 2:30. Last time I called the cops, on July 3rd, they came down. They were, they were letting off the fireworks and stuff in the middle of the night then. They came down the following day, they confiscated fireworks. What did I get for calling the cops? The tenant turned in their car around and opened up the back hatch of their vehicle and I had to listen to rap music. That's what I had to deal with because I called the cops. Every time I call the cops, I have, have to deal with more. I'm done. This is, this is me asking for help because if something's not done tonight, then I got to take things into my own hands. It's on record tonight, I've asked for help for the last time.
I have to, I have to second Brian's, I live right across the street. I've never called on them, but there hasn't been a good week there
No.
in the five years we've been there. Winter, summer, spring, fall, doesn't matter.
I don't even like to say this on record.
The complaints in this are minor, there's like 15, 20 times more times that this could have happened. So I, I told Brian I would come forward
I've talked to these by several times, trying to talk to them.
Don't let a rental be there.
It doesn't help, it does, it does no good.
I definitely appreciate your input.
I see you woke up at midnight and 2:30 in the morning by things that sound like bombs going off. And I don't like to put this out there, I am a combat vet and I don't appreciate it. So it needs to, it needs to stop.
If you are going to revoke, you should also revoke the conditional use permit.
Which the conditional use permit allowed for the rental in the R1.
Thanks for your input, Brian, I appreciate it.
So he's saying that there's a lot of stuff done prior, if we weren't notified about it, how are we supposed to do anything about it?
You were here last fall, right?
Yeah, and we kept up with that, that's why we got the money back. We drove, I drive here every week to keep an eye on them, but I'm not here nights and I've done everything you guys have asked as far as this, this is the first time, and I apologize to you and you as well and all the neighbors.
Do we have a
It's not something that I like to deal with either.
Still in our ordinance to do background checks on all rental properties in the City of Janesville?
We do that.
Have them been done?
Yes.
Through the police department here, Tom? Okay. Just want to make sure that process was taken care of.
I move to revoke, that's my motion. If I get a second.
I'll second that. All in favor of revoking the license and the conditional use permit?
Aye.
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 4-0.
Thank you, Brian.
Which is resolution 2021-18, Andy, you and I will find that okay.
Yep.
Sorry, but it's gone on too long.
I was just asking what I could have
Just second, Jason has some.
Is that effective immediately? Typically, typically it would be effective immediately.
It's effective immediately then.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so
So the next step is get them out of there as quick as you can. Do the eviction and get them out.
We'll send you a copy of the resolution after everything is inside so that you have something to take with you.
And from this point forward, no more rentals. No more property.
So does that also revoke that it has got it back to a single family?
Yes.
The conditional use permit is gone as well, so yeah, it would go to R1.
Thank you.
New business number two, indoor air quality report.
All right.
A lot of stuff in there.
Yeah.
Clint, that's going to take some time, this is a lot of stuff in there.
It is. City Hall is about, what, 23, 24 years old. We've been experiencing some problems here quite a bit in the most recent few years, but quite honestly, in all the years I've been here, there's been issues with humidity, mold. Brian, you're here. Brian, is it, it's regular
How does it affect him if he wouldn't be willing to speak again and you all have questions?
Come back up to the podium. We are constantly struggling and fighting the air quality conditions in this building. We, with Brian's help, we've put air purifiers in here. Brian, you replaced a central air unit 15 years ago, that didn't seem to help the carpet. For lack of better words, the carpet sucks and there's a lot of mold under it. Sarah, do you have something to say?
I just wanted to thank Brian for the many, multiple times I have called or texted him and he has not charged for that sort of, he has always tapped in, given him feedback and checked it out. I want to thank Brian for that.
So I'll just say in the microphone, since you're not in front of us, Sarah, thanks, Brian, for all the work you've done over the years in coming here and helping us.
Trying to put a band-aid on our problem.
Beginning on about page six of this extensive report, there's a list of recommendations. We need to do something. I forgot to do this on Friday, but I was going to put a piece of paper on that table to show you that with the humidity that we have right now, a piece of paper will curl up like this in three days. That's how bad the humidity is in this building. We know for a fact mold exists all over our air ducts, it's probably too late to fix them and to clean them. So we need to do something. We have received the funding with the American Rescue Plan Act money. We can improve HVAC system in city-owned buildings to help the visitors and the employees breathe better. That's part of the, it's part of the COVID-related funding.
My assumption is the next step would be some type of an estimate?
Yes, and basically what we're looking at tonight is we want the city council to look at this report and to come up with an estimate on, you know, some of these items or at least have a few more people come in and get some good ideas of what the cost.
What timeframe would you need to bring an estimate forward?
18 years ago.